So I'll go ahead with the first question, since I've got the floor here. I would like you to to address those that have questions about the fact that your political interests at least initially were at a higher level of government. You when you ran for state assembly, the issues being faced by the state and your opportunity to do things at the state level is pretty dramatically different than what can be done at the municipal level. And so I wonder if you could address why, why this council? Why not continue your pursuit of a state as a state representative position?
Sure. The commonality is an interest in serving and serving in a place where I can make a difference. And in the interim, in the six years since I ran, been doing a lot of things that I couldn't have done but for having run. That actually opened a lot of doors for me to a different kind of public service for which I'm really grateful. You know, I ran a for a nonprofit out of Washington, ran a consensus building dialogue in Sacramento on healthcare. And then I founded Sibling Cities USA, where I'm trying to repair national divides, regional divides by connecting cities across the nation. In so doing, I had the opportunity to talk to people at the National League of Cities, at the US Conference of Mayors, to mayors all across this great country. I went to the US Conference of Mayors meeting recently and met mayors from, you know, the Midwest, from the Northwest, from the South, from all over. And it was fascinating to me and it struck me what an immediate impact they had on their communities and what a profound impact they had on their communities. And not only that, that collectively they could have an incredible impact. So, you know, for example, on climate, if Palo Alto does great climate things, that's terrific. It's not going to save the planet. But if we set an example and we connect with others, we could, you know, how we can let Congress know of the needs of cities and some of the dollars that have come through recently, that's done collectively. But mainly, when I listen to these mayors talks, talk about housing models they had, parks, those kinds of things, I got it. And I thought, you know, this is a place where I could have some immediate impact. And because I care deeply about this community, I've lived in it for 30 years, it's given an awful lot to me and my daughters. It just sort of clicked and I realized this is a place I could have impact. And so here I am.
And have you been thinking of of your next move in terms of serving the community since the the Assembly race? Or did something occur such as COVID or something else that that kind of triggered your renewed interest in running?
I've had ongoing interest in serving and but I wanted to do it in a place where where I thought I could make a difference and where and where I thought I could win. And, you know, had I just wanted to be announced coming into a room, I would have run two years after the 2016 race or four years after, I wouldn't have waited six years. It's now that I feel that I could make a difference for our city because of the issues I just mentioned, because of the impact I just mentioned, and also because I think there's a lot of people who believe our city is kind of stuck on a lot of issues. And I'm, I'm by nature an optimist. And after the experience I had in Sacramento, bringing really people with very strong opposing beliefs to a consensus around healthcare where people, that's a closely held issue. That's a, there's a lot of heat around that. And especially when we started in 2017 with the single payer debate. And, you know, we had, we had doctors, hospitals, insurers, consumers of all stripes. We had Lonnie Chen at Stanford from Hoover. We had someone from the Cal Labor Center. I mean, we had the chamber, we had labor, we had them all in a room. And the fact that that got to, yes, they found a third way to get together to rein in skyrocketing healthcare costs. And then it was interesting enough that Assembly member Wood, who chairs the Health Committee, took it up, put it in a bill, got it through, COVID hit, it got stalled a little bit, brought it up again, got it through the Senate too, and Newsom signed it into law in July. That's encouraging to me. I watched that happen and it was because people had a commitment to the result, to getting something done. And I think there's a lot of really smart people of goodwill in this city that care about this city. It just can't seem to get to yes. And it's something where I think my skills might help at this time. So it felt like the right time. There's three open seats. Here I am.
So what will that look like if you're elected? I mean, you, you bring these experiences and credentials and your mediation orientation, and you're describing the community as being stuck. So where does Vicky Vinker do her stuff to overcome that, that situation?
Yeah, well, you know, and, and remember, I'm a professional mediator, but I'm also a recovering litigator. So I spent 25 years representing clients, meaning not necessarily what Vicky thinks, but what did they think, listening to them, figuring out what they think, what they want, what they want to achieve and advocating for it. And I think the council is a blend of both, because we're, we're supposed to, our primary role is to represent residents, figure out what they want, figure out what we think, you know, based on that and listening to others and learning is the best thing and then advocate for it and build enough consensus, we can actually get it done. And so, you know, for me, I feel like I've begun that process through this campaign. I have an unusually broad set of endorsers, you may have noticed. A lot of former mayors that often disagree on topics of the day, especially around housing, have talked to me and endorsed me. And I think what that represents is going forward is an opportunity for ongoing communication and trust and respect, which is what it takes to get things done. And so having that, I think, will help us move forward. And it's something where there's a lot of water under the bridge on a lot of these issues. The fact that I, while having been a resident, been aware, been in conversations, but may not have been right in the middle of them, I think allows me the opportunity to have a relatively fresh set of eyes and a voice on these issues and to bridge some of those communication gaps. Because honestly, I think there is a lot of overlap these days. And people have been focusing on where they disagree. But, you know, I looked at the ballot statements from just a few years ago, I don't know, four, six years ago, when I was crafting mine, a lot of them talked about words that you don't hear much anymore, at least I haven't heard it in this race, like overdevelopment. So I think there actually is sort of a centering of views and we just need to get unstuck and move forward.
So one more general question, then I'll let Jocelyn and others pursue more specific issues. But I wonder if, if on this general topic of reaching, of getting things done and reaching consensus, I wonder if you could give an example using maybe Castile La, maybe Coverley, maybe grade crossings, something that, that the city has struggled with? And, and describe how you might have suggested a different approach on that issue?
Sure. And I'll take, I'm gonna take a couple and kind of put them together and answer your question. So a lot of earnest work went into the Coverley plan, hours and hours of smart people, neighbors, other stakeholders. And then they got back options, they weren't happy with them, stalled out. The North Ventura situation too, where they attempted to get a comprehensive area plan process. And a lot of people have been unhappy with came, what came out. I want to dive more deeply into why, but from the preliminary conversations I've had with people who were involved in both of those processes, it seems like there was some kind of disconnect between the sort of the input and the iterative conversations and and the, the expression of preferences and the output from the consultants and options. And I know when we did the Sacramento work, it was the options that we, that was part of an iterative process where we talked a lot about those and asked a lot about, you know, not just what all do you want, but when you're looking at trade offs, what, what would you trade off? And I think we need to figure out, that's where I'd want to look more closely at why, you know, we had a robust process, but then a disconnect from what, what people saw coming out of it. There's, there's some, something in that piece that seems to have gotten lost. And that's what I'd like to look at to see if we can do it better.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Vicky.
Hi, Jocelyn.
I wanted to ask you about your vision for housing. We've, we've got a lot of activity down on the San Antonio area, for example. But I'm also hearing that developments by themselves, without amenities, without parks, without transit, are going to be neighborhoods that nobody wants to live in. So how, how is it that you kind of envision this procession of development that's, that's already been proposed and going to be proposed? How do you see turning this situation where housing is going to be there into this more full kind of vision of neighborhoods with great quality of life and everything that someone could want?
Yeah, I mean, that's the $64,000 question, right? We can point out little spots in our housing element and say, you know, they add up to 6,086. But we want the people that we welcome into our community to enjoy it the way we do, to, you know, enjoy the quirky things about the different neighborhoods, to have parks, be able to ride their bike, do all that, all those things that you're referencing. And I understand that the housing element is part of the bigger comprehensive plan. But it seems to me that instead of, you know, a proposal here and a proposal there, I mean, honestly, I look at council dealing with these things that pop up. And I think that's, I'm not, I'm not really, you know, eager to deal with those on a weekly basis. What I'm eager to deal with are things like these area plans that you've mentioned, whether it's the downtown area plan or other comprehensive area plans for the venture, North Ventura, whether there should be one, since all, there's all this talk about Coverley, and that's one of the places where we're kind of stuck. Should we be looking at some of the proposed housing in, in South Palo Alto and Coverley as sort of one, you know, problem, like, no, problem, strike that, one area, one opportunity where we can maybe get it right if we look at it more holistically. You know, again, it, the, it's going to be up to a stakeholder process working well, as we've just discussed a few minutes ago. But I think if we're, just as if we look at one side at a time, I think if we also just look at housing and don't think about schools or safe routes to schools or transit, that's not good. So we need to figure out for the different housing we're proposing in different areas, what are the nature of the trips people are going to need who might live there? Are they going to need to get primarily to school? Are they going to need primarily to get to 101 or to a train? What are we going to do? And that could help dictate what type of housing we would build, you know, and where we put it, how dense we want it. And then what are the services that these people need also, you know, what, what shopping dining do they want, you know, are these folks that, are they going to need a grocery store? Or are they more interested in, you know, running shoes and coffee shops? I don't know. But I think looking at that kind of thing holistically, it takes us time upfront, but hopefully it'll give developers more of a sense of what kind of projects to bring so that in the long run, we can move more quickly. Because that's the other thing about this very big number that we're looking at, the 6,086 is, if you back up and think about, you know, some, a developer making a design plan, bringing it forward, going through approval processes, and then you start building, you get building approval processes, and that's, that's a lot of time. And so we're going to have to figure out not just where we want to put things, but how to have an efficient process for discerning if the things being brought forward are those that fit with, with the Palo Alto we want to see.
And talking about some specifics then, what's your feeling about the 50 foot height limit? Are you in favor of busting that in certain areas? What would be your criteria for, for, for creating the place that we want to live?
I would like to say adjusting it, not busting it, but I take your point. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think realistically, we're going to have to be open to adjusting it in certain places. We, for example, there was a small adjustment made when we, for the, the teacher housing and the county land, they didn't need city approval because it was county land, but you know, it went up, I think 55 feet or something with a parapet. But it fit in with the surrounding environment. I think we can be smart enough to figure out where we can add height that doesn't look, you know, isn't right next door to a, a single family home and looks right, right in and with a 10 story building. But it's going to take some thoughtfulness. But I think that it is a tool, it's another lever we have in the right settings, which are, you know, the places people talk about downtown, Calav, El Camino Real, although we have to be a little careful, they're not too deep. And you, it's nice to have, you know, sort of height gradations as you get toward the single family neighborhoods. But I think, I think we're going to have to adjust those.
All right. Let's talk about areas of town then. How would you, so the staff have a lot on their plates. And the last thing they need is more and more projects, but that's the nature of their job. How would you prioritize then the, the area plan development? Would that be based on where proposals are already simmering so that you can really address that fast? Or do you think that, you know, El Camino is more important than San Antonio? How, how as a council member, would you kind of, kind of try to guide the area plan process so that it's just not all landing on the staff and then they're too stretched and stressed?
Yeah, I know. That's a really good point. We can't be doing a half dozen at once. We would need to sequence them in some way. I mean, perhaps there could be some overlap as we sequence them if they're at different stages. But, right, we would have to figure out how to prioritize them. I think, you know, and I would want to consult with, with staff and my council colleagues to see, you know, what is sort of further along in the thinking or what is the most needy to have this, this broader process. But, for example, there's a lot of discussion about downtown area plan being early in the sequence because it involves the train station and the train tracks and, you know, that whole discussion around grade separation or what could it look like, should it look like? So that almost seems like a twofer, where I would think we'd want to do that early in the process. It also is kind of a, a gem of an area in our community. It's what a lot of people outside of our community think about when they think about Palo Alto. And if we did it really well, it could inspire, you know, some other good thinking and creative thinking in other areas. So that, that would be one I would, would try to prioritize. I think perhaps the, what I discussed a few minutes ago about sort of the Coverley, South Palo Alto would also be a place we'd want to look. We need to pay a little more attention to South Palo Alto, especially around, you know, retail needs and things we don't typically think about there. But if we're going to be putting a lot of people in there, we're going to need to think about that. And so that seems to me would take a, would, could benefit from a holistic approach, especially with the whole Coverley thing going on. Again, perhaps we get a two for there. So, you know, I don't have a hard set order, Jocelyn, for exactly how I would do it. But those are the kinds of things I'd want to talk about and consult with my colleagues to give direction to the staff as to how to, how to cycle through them.
Okay, thank you.
Vicky, you recall the, the Ariaga proposal, I assume, for the, the train station area? Do you not?
Well, is, is this the one that, that involves the MacArthur Park area too, that whole thing?
Yeah, yeah. This is a proposal and I, I'm terrible with remembering. I'll, I'll think of something as being five years ago and it was actually 10 years ago, but genetic, at least 10 years ago. But, but my, my question is, you know, you mentioned the down to a plan for downtown and its relationship to that area. And I guess I want to just raise the, the point or the question as to whether those two really do need to be done at the same time. And we've got a plan that was submitted that was roundly ridiculed basically, but it was due to the fact that it was almost entirely commercial development. It was basically a bunch of office, tall office buildings. There were objections for traffic reasons or objections for view shed. It, it was not what the community needed. We didn't need more office buildings. But it represented a vision that gave people something to, to think about. It included a performing arts center. You know, it was a, it was a way to, to envision how that whole area could be different. And I just, and, and given that it's not next to any residential neighborhood, I mean, there's basically, it's an island in essence. And I just wonder if, if that could be an opportunity for a real creative housing development that had some mixed use, but that basically was taking that, that vision, but making it a housing vision?
Yeah, I, I think that's interesting. You know, I need to have a little chat with Karen Holman about the historic qualities of MacArthur Park, because I know, you know, that's a serious concern for a lot of people. And, but maybe there's a creative way to incorporate that. Maybe there's, you know, something we could do there that's more creative and really sets a high standard. And, you know, the people are talking about proposals for housing above Stanford Shopping Center across the street. We could do both things. And maybe the mixed use then would make more sense for retail in the areas you're talking about. I, I think there's a lot we could do if we looked hard at it. I had intended to hold this thought until after the campaign, but since you've raised this, you know, one of the things that I learned during my Sibling Cities work was that a little town named Columbus, Indiana, not Ohio, because there's only 46,000 people in it, is ranked by the AIA as the sixth most interesting city for architecture in the country, behind New York, San Francisco, Chicago, and one other. Because the Cummins engine is there and one of the town leaders, community leaders, 70 years ago, decided that the way to get top executives and people to come to Columbus, Indiana, was to hire top architects to come first and build amazing public spaces and buildings, which they did. I Am Pay and all kinds of others, this extraordinary thing that just sits in this little town. And it worked. Imagine if we did that. I mean, imagine instead of just the, the Google plaques and Apple having these incredible buildings, what if, you know, the top of Stanford Shopping Center, we let someone loose and said, do something beautiful, do something amazing, do something green. We want to see reach codes implemented. We want to see this be like the star thing. I, I think it would be interesting. What if we became known for innovative housing? And so it's, it's, it's a dream. It's, it's an innovation. But I think if you aim high, even if you fall a little short, you can do something pretty special. And perhaps that's a place where we could.
While we're still on this housing topic, because I know we need to move on, but I wonder if you could describe your feelings about what our neighboring communities have done in this, in this direction. They all seem to be way ahead of us in terms of achieving more housing. And I'm thinking of both Mountain View and Redwood City in particular, but also the, the projects that are underway in Menlo Park and nearing, nearing completion in Menlo Park, both in terms of height, density, type of housing, all those factors. Is there anything about anything that's going on in those three communities that particularly either excites you or repels you?
Well, I think that Mountain View, from what I understand, made very good use of what they call, I believe, specific area plans, which are essentially our comprehensive area plans. And so there's sort of proof of process principle there. And I believe Redwood City did that with their downtown. So that's encouraging, that things then went through council more quickly, which I think is why, part of why they're ahead of us. We would, of course, want to put our own Palo Alto spin on it to, you know, keep the things about the neighborhoods that we love, but make sure that we're adding room for new people. And I think we're smart enough to do it. I think we can find places to do it. I think, I, I can't point to a particular building I like less than others, but, but generally the ones that I don't care for as much are ones that don't have much setback, don't have many trees around them. I think that Palo Alto is known for its trees. Now, we may not be able to have as many around some of these, but I think, I think it's, I think for the new people, the point isn't just to put people, you know, in a building. The point is for them to be happy when they come home and see it and to feel like it's home and to enjoy the city the way we do. So I would want projects that had, you know, some interest in the, in the architecture, incorporated trees and some open space and, but still had sufficient density that we could get in the numbers of people we need. And obviously, different levels of affordability would have, would be critical.
Can I ask a follow up on that real quick? A huge, a huge vision from the current political city council is to add a ton of housing in San Antonio, areas that are currently commercial and industrial. Given what you just said about wanting to have amenities and those kinds of things around neighborhoods, how do you feel about that strategy? And, and also, given what you said about area plans, would you prioritize an area like San Antonio where a ton of housing is already proposed for an area plan? Or something like downtown where you think it's strategically would be great to have housing there, but there's no real proposals? So just, your views on San Antonio would be great.
Sure. Yeah. And that's what I was trying to reference earlier about, you know, seems like downtown, we've got the train station, we've got a lot going on there, should be higher in the sequence. And then when I say South Palo Alto, I also mean that whole San Antonio corridor, because there's housing proposed in the housing element on both the north and the south side, although a lot more on the south side. And, you know, I actually drove past some of the ones on Fabian Way on the north side. And, you know, there's already a lot of, of housing back in there. And so I think we should think about it. That is, that is a good place for an area plan. And that is a place where some of the retail needs we'd have to look at. Can Mountain View satisfy those? How many would we want to bring in? But I think one of the biggest issues for that, for housing in that locale is schools and safe routes to schools. So, you know, the, I mean, my kids crossed in Barcadero to go to Walter Hayes because they shut down Garland at the end of our block. But crossing San Antonio is probably even harder for children and, and we would need to be careful about it. I don't know if it's possible to build a reasonable pedestrian bike bridge across it for that purpose. If maybe we'd need an elevator instead of just a ramp, I don't know. But I think that's the kind of thing that would have to be discussed before we just said, how many can we put in here? And can we do the math? So, you know, I know some people are concerned, let's just stick housing over there away from people. I wouldn't want to see it be part of an integrated community. I wouldn't want it all just there so we don't have to put any in the north. But there could be an opportunity, again, if we did it well, instead of thinking of, you know, shoving housing away there, what if we thought about investing in the area? And it would be closer perhaps to this new community center we might build. So those are the things I would want to explore through an area plan. But I do think that's a good place for it.
But if the city's facing like a deadline now to submit its housing element, and they've, they've presented like over 1,000 units in that particular section of San Antonio, like, do you think that should be in the current housing element, given that those amenities you'd like to see, pedestrian bridge and retail are not there yet? Or would you consider not doing that strategy and kind of shifting elsewhere?
I, as I sit here, I don't know where else one would put enough of that housing. I would be, I mean, I think there's going to be a lot of discussion and adjustment of that housing element as it goes forward. I would be open to shifting some away from it, but I'm also open to exploring if, you know, how many units we can get there that are well, well tended, if you will. So I guess I don't have a strong feeling about taking them out now. But I do know that people have raised some concerns about sort of, you know, making it too dense, making it too distant. And if we move forward on that, I'd want to address those. I think we probably can, but, so I guess I don't necessarily need to see those moved right now in the housing element. But, and I would, although I'd also want to listen to proposals of where we would put them instead, because I know the big number and people are struggling for where to put, put all the housing. So.
Thank you.
I mean, I do think it should be throughout the city. So that's one thing. I don't want to just stick it all down in there. But even that, there's still five But even that, there's still five thousand more that we're putting in other places in the city.
So a quick follow up on that, I know we're still on housing, but that's the topic of the day. I believe in either your, your questionnaire or on your website, you said that the ADU permit is, process is not quite working and it needs to be fixed. And I'm wondering if you could just explain your thinking on that.
I may have said that. I don't recall saying not working and, and fixed, but I do think I said that we should speed it up and streamline it, I think is what I said. And, uh, yeah, I just think that there are people who are hitting snags, uh, who are interested in this. And we should, if, if they want to do an ADU, we should be trying to find ways to review those applications more quickly. I'm not saying we should change a lot of the requirements about ADUs in terms of them conforming with existing codes. But more how we can, can process them at the city more quickly.
Do you think that is, to your understanding, is that a lack of staff? Or is there some sort of process that you believe is just less, less efficient than, than needs to be?
I, I believe the latter. I don't have a lot of detail. I've just heard a lot of complaining about it. So I don't have visibility and that's something where I'm counsel, I'd want to find out why, why are these slower? But I do believe that if someone has an interest in, in adding units this way, uh, we should do our best to get out of the way as long as they're complying with our codes.
Okay, sure. Moving on to one of the topics that you brought up that I don't believe many of the other candidates weighed in on, and that's libraries. Uh, it does, it does seem like there's millions and millions of dollars spent on city facilities. The library system is one of them. J M Z is another. That then at the, at the end of the process, after these million dollars are spent, uh, the access is less than it was before the fixes. So how would you, what is needed in order to expand library hours? Again, is that staffing issue? If it needs more funding, where would you get the funding? So what needs to happen there to make them more accessible?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. It, we're a library family. My mother was a children's librarian. I grew up going to the library. My husband grew up going to the library. We've taken our daughters to all the libraries in town over the years. And, you know, to the point that my daughters now live in LA and DC and they still go to the libraries there. So we may be a little bit, you know, we're, we're a library family. And I think Palo Alto is a library town. We have five of them. We value education. It's an equitable thing where people in different walks of life meet. It's a cross generational meeting place. I, I just think they're terrific. So yes, they got cut back. Uh, the hours got cut back substantially during the pandemic. They're working to restore the hours. But, uh, and, and I, and I understand there is a workforce component there, that it is hard to hire right now. But I believe there's a, a couple of things that would make it better, uh, would, would better serve our residents right now. One, if they could just coordinate their schedules a little better. I, I don't know what the hiccup is there. I would like to talk to them. Perhaps there's a good reason, but I don't understand why all of them are closed on a Sunday, when that's when most people take their children to the library on weekends. You can do it on Saturday, but you can't do it on a Sunday. And that just seems odd to me that, you know, we have these two gems, the two biggest ones, Rinconada and Mitchell, maybe one on one and day and one on the other. I, I don't understand why that's an issue, coordinating schedules, but you know, that's something we could explore. But also the, the budget, you mentioned getting the funds for it. You know, I'd like to look into budget priorities and see if that's something that we could, could help with. I think that, uh, you know, if Measure L goes through on the gas transfer, that will, you know, keep funds flowing there that we could use for general services like this. So, you know, those, those are the different things I would want to look into to see what, why we don't have this, but we have, like I said, we made this great capital investment in, in these and seems like there ought to be ways to make it more accessible seven days a week.
Fifteen to, to police and police reform. As an attorney, I'm interested in your views about efforts to do away with binding arbitration in the union contract. This has been used as a, it's been a big problem throughout agencies that have binding arbitration in the removal of officers. And I'm wondering if right now that contract is being negotiated and it would be a good time to raise that issue. How do you feel about that?
Well, first of all, I am an attorney, but I am not a labor lawyer. So, uh, you know, I have to invent something and call me in the morning for me to be particularly useful. But, um, but I, I mean, I, I do understand, of course, contracts and negotiation and things. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think with, uh, binding arbitration, it's something where I don't want it to be misused. We need to be able to find ways to have employees, including union employees who are not performing well or who have violated rules or, or, or had poor performance, not keep their positions. But I, I think the, the, uh, using binding arbitration sometimes can be too too unforgiving, if, if you will. And so I think it's something where I'm not as troubled as others by it.
When you say too unforgiving, can you explain what you mean by that?
Well, I think you're talking about keeping binding arbitration in labor contracts.
I'm talking about removing it because it, it is very forgiving. The arbitration rarely leads to the upholding of a dismissal of an officer.
Right, right. Yeah, I said it backwards, but yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting because in most other areas of the law, people prefer arbitration because they don't want to get involved in ongoing court battles forever. But I think it depends on what one thinks of the arbitrators and the arbitrate, you know, the system and the rules and such. And if there are, you know, pro labor arbitrators, so to speak. And I mean, for me, if it can make a more efficient system and I, I guess that the, it's the process that we would have to get at. Why is it that it makes it harder to, to remove poor performers? Do we need to rethink who the arbitrators are? Do we need to think what the arbitration process is? Usually it should be more efficient, cheaper, faster than going to a court. So is there a way to retain those benefits of arbitration where we feel there's a fair chance of you know, vindicating an employee who perhaps has not been committed the egregious conduct, but making those who have still move on. So I, I guess I just haven't given up on the arbitration process yet. And I would be more interested in reforming it so that the city could still be well represented, because that's critical, right? We have to have officers we're proud of. Most of the officers are good. We don't want the good ones tainted with the bad behavior. I'm just not ready to throw it out yet.
Okay. I think the problem basically has become that cities have given up on using arbitration to remove officers. And as a result, they don't get removed. Because the reality is that arbiters never hardly ever side with the cities. They're very pro labor.
Yeah. So that would be the thing to get at is get at the process.
I know that Janati wants to ask a follow up question about police, and so I'm going to let him ask his question.
Thanks, Bill. Totally predictable. This is a similar question that I asked during the forum, but you'll have more than fifteen seconds, like you did last time, but, um, the, the city has been talking at least since like twenty twenty about the need to improve to make, to make sure officers are policing in an unfair and unbiased manner. I just wanted to get your take on how you think the city is doing with that effort and what more, if anything, Palo Alto should be doing to make sure there's fair and unbiased enforcement. Thanks.
No, thanks for asking that question because, you know, given the unrest of the last few years, it's particularly pertinent. You know, the, I mean, all across the country, uh, we, in the wake of the murder of George Floyd, we had the Black Lives Matter protests and we had one here in town. We had a BLM banner painted in front of city hall. I joined some of those marches. I think it was a, uh, not so much called a protest as a march for peace, but I, it's, it's really critical. It actually, I believe, helps and protects our good officers if they feel that the force is respected and behaving well. And I think that requires ongoing training in biased training, cultural competency, et cetera. It's interesting, my husband is, uh, since December, has been a victim witness advocate down in the DA's office for the county and Jeff Rosen's office. So he sees the victims, not so much the, the alleged perpetrators, but he works with people who have been involved in these incidences in their times of trauma. And, um, you know, sometimes police can inadvertently treat victims with bias as well. And, um, you know, he gets the fallout from that and it can be significant and severe. And so the victim advocates are, go through some intense bias training and I, I think that continuing on, I know our police force does some of that, but continuing on with that is, is absolutely critical. And then monitoring it somehow to see, you know, what incidences occur and what complaints there are. And if they're legitimate, investigating them, getting to the root of it. That's all very important. But also if we can prevent some of these in the first place by some of the new initiatives, I think most of the candidates talked about the per initiative and I certainly support that. Because if you, it may seem to be an additional investment upfront to send a mental health professional along with a police officer on calls that involve, you know, issues of behavioral health, whether it's drug abuse or mental health episodes. But if it can result in de-escalation and less physical violence, in the long run, it's a great investment. It's, 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 it's healthier for all involved. We don't have police follow up. You can get it to the right professional, the right treatment at the right time. So I think making sure that we embrace and continue those programs will be critical.
Thank you.
Gosselin.
Have any other questions?
I, I would like to ask you, Vicki, if you were supportive of the final council action on Castelaya, would you have voted for that resolution?
That's a great question, partly because there were so many back and forths, it's hard for me to remember all of the details of that last one, because there is one where we took a lot of cycles to make a decision. My memory is that the thing I was more, that, that I was not as delighted at as I hoped was the increasing enrollment that was allowed through that. I, I think they're going to have trouble staying on that site in the long run. It's nice. They want to fix it up. That's great, but I'm afraid we're going to get right back in the suit pretty soon. I would I have been beaten down enough after all those years to have voted for it too? I don't know, but it was not, it was not the outcome I had hoped for.
So what you're saying is that you were unhappy with the degree of enrollment increases that was built into the, into the CUP?
Yes.
Okay. And you expect them to, even with that increase, to come back and needing more? Is that, is that your?
My memory was that there was a scaling where they just, they, they, they can't, like there was starting with here and, and then it would go up and then it would go up with some demonstration that the car trips weren't too many or something like that. And it seemed like it was likely to go up and more than perhaps I would have, would have liked.
Okay. The other thing I want to just get your quick comment on is, is, is on that grade separation. As, as I read your position on that, it is basically that you're, you're in favor of the current approach to keeping Churchill open to traffic. And you would like to look at some of the options at the East Meadow and Charleston connections that involve the train potentially going underground. But in any case, not up above those intersections. Can you, can you just quickly summarize what your view is on the grade crossings?
Yes. So generally, I'm trying to keep the trains kind of where they are and move the cars under, but in different ways and different places. So yes, at Churchill, I like the idea that I believe came from the community option of not closing it entirely, but closing it to cross traffic. So not coming on down Churchill, but that there would be turn lanes from Alma that could go under the tracks. So we didn't need the, the flyover and we didn't need to tunnel other than for the, um, the underpass for the cars. So that, that seems to make more sense to me. Similarly, at the Meadow and Charleston in South Palo Alto, they're exploring options. It's a little less clear to me exactly how they'd work. I think they're still developing some of them, including how they would separate bike and pedestrians from the cars. But there's some, what do you call it? Traffic circle options where the traffic would go under the trains. And so again, we're not tunneling for the trains, which is expensive and I think there's some water table issues there. We're not elevating the trains, um, which I know some of the neighbors don't like. And I think there's, it's, it's tough to go up and down in the short distance between the two crossings. So, you know, I'm happy to hear more on all of these, but the ones that, that seems to be the least disruptive and make the most sense to me is to send the cars under.
Is that your, your sole reason for not wanting to consider the viaduct, the concern of the immediate neighbors?
Well, I mean, honestly, I, I don't, I'm not an immediate neighbor, but I, I don't, I don't love the idea of the trains being up above. I think there's also the sound, I think, would travel even further perhaps. I think that it's not particularly beautiful for the city to have all the standards or whatever one calls them that supports the train. But so I don't know that it's just the immediate neighbors. I think that goes further than that, but I do think it's important to call, to, to consider the impact on those whom it impacts most, which are the people that see and hear it more than the rest of us.
Okay. I'm done.
I also think, as a general note, I don't think there is a great option here. I don't, I think we keep thinking, if we keep looking, we're going to come up with one where we all go, that's it. I think we've looked pretty hard for a long time now, and I think there's tough trade offs, no matter what we do. So I mean, I can tell you the ones I'm leaning toward, but I can't tell you they're without their own deficits. So that's, um.
Well, if we had more time, I'd ask you the question. Does Palo Alto suffer from counsel that wants to always seek the solution that will, that everyone will like? And to what extent that gets in the way of ever making a decision in a timely manner? It's, it's the, it's the forever quest for the perfect solution.
I think human beings are wired that way. I don't, and I don't think the council.
They're especially wired that way in Palo Alto, I think.
Well, I, yeah, the council is no exception. And at some point you just got to take your lumps and make a decision. You know, that's, that's the thing. If we keep waiting for the perfect decision, we'll never make one. And that is, and the problem is that is making a decision. We can't miss the federal or state funds that are freeing up. I mean, that's another thing. You know, so we're, we're, we're going to have to pick amongst the bad options. And what's interesting is that's what I'm hearing out there when I'm talking to voters. You know, so we're we're going to have to pick amongst the bad options. And what's interesting is that's what I'm hearing out there when I'm talking to voters. So I mean, they'll say, look, we know, we know there's nothing great that you can do, but we need to do something. And we do, because people are getting hurt and injured on these tracks and traffic isn't getting any better. So we we just need to do something.
Yeah. Okay.
Janati's smiling because he doesn't have to make the decision.
He'd probably be happy to make the decision for no other reason not to have to report on this any longer.
There you go.
You're a mind reader, Vicky. Well, thank you. Thank you, Vicky, very much. We appreciate your being here and it's it's an interesting race and we wish you good luck.
Well, thanks so much for doing this process. I know it's a lot of time and effort on your part, but I think it's a good thing. And thanks for having me. And I don't know, Bill, if this is your last go around, I'm even more honored. So I'm glad glad I got in there.
All right.
Pull him back in a couple of years.
Yeah, this will be my retirement, because doing these every two years.
I know a lot of people that have flunked retirement, so you know.
I'm going to get at least a passing grade. That's my.
There you go. Well, I wish that for you. You deserve it. All right. Thank you all.